Councillor Martinez will lead us this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nita, would you call well first, please? Councillor Lorenz?
Here.
Councillor Schlebach?
Here.
Councillor Martinez?
Here.
Councillor Schrader?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here.
The quorum is declared.
Thank you. We do have one modification to our agenda this evening. We need to add the MOU with the Crane Festival to the agendas.
Will I approve that last meeting?
There's a change.
Oh, there's a change?
Yeah. So do we have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So who?
The other discussion.
Nita? Councillor Lorenz?
Hi.
Councillor Martinez?
Hi.
Councillor Schrader?
Hi.
Councillor Schlebach?
Hi.
Mayor Garcia?
Here. Hi, Carrie, sorry. Moving on to proclamations of the approval of the minutes on the trans table from the last meeting.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay, Nita?
Councillor Schlebach?
Hi.
Councillor Lorenz?
Hi.
Councillor Martinez?
Hi.
Councillor Schrader?
Hi.
Mayor Garcia?
Hi.
Motion carries?
Thank you. Okay, on proclamations, communications, and appointments, we have the swearing-in of Officer Corp... oh, sorry. The swearing-in for Corporal Tristan Van...
Right.
Not even gonna try it. Not even gonna try it.
Anybody here that's want to come on up and introduce someone?
Oh, I sure am.
This is my wife, Cassandra Van Zollian.
I'd like to introduce Tristan Van Zollian, Corporal, just hired a week ago, so this date's gonna be a little different, that's why. Would you like to pin?
Oh, yeah, all right.
I think this is best, anyway, with the camera. When you're swearing in, just repeat after me. Hi, state your name.
Hi, Tristan Van Zollian.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm?
Or affirm.
Under the penalty of perjury?
Under the penalty of perjury.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States of America?
And the laws of the United States of America.
And of the State of Colorado?
And of the State of Colorado.
And the Charter and ordinances?
And the Charter and the ordinances.
Of the City of Monavista?
Of the City of Monavista.
And the County of Rio Grande?
And the County of Rio Grande.
And that I will faithfully perform?
And that I will faithfully perform.
The duties of Corporal?
The duties of Corporal.
For the City of Monavista?
For the City of Monavista.
And the County of Rio Grande?
And the County of Rio Grande.
To which I have been appointed?
To which I have been appointed.
And upon which I'm about to take her.
And upon which I'm about to take her.
Good, thanks. He's been a deputy in Swatch and Rio Grande County. Anything else on the long-term side?
No. I was a deputy for about five years on the local Swatch county, was promoted to sergeant, then promoted to undersheriff. After that, I came to Rio Grande County, started as deputy in Rio Grande, and was promoted to sergeant in Rio Grande counties. And would like to come work for John.
Glad to have you.
We're glad you're here.
Thank you.
So we'd like to get a picture for welcoming the community to know you're here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Verbal. All right, next item on our agenda is the appointment of the new municipal judge. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we appoint Barb Zollers as our new municipal judge.
Second.
Any other discussion? Nita?
Councillor Schlebach?
Hi.
Councillor Lorenz?
Nay.
Councillor Martinez?
Aye.
Councillor Schrader?
Aye.
Mayor Garcia?
Aye.
Motion carries, quarter one.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to citizens' comments and special presentations, we have Garrett Johnson here to talk about the ice rink.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councillors. I do both of these here. I believe you have the information on the ice rink construction help, per your request. We just need a little assistance relocating some foundation, basically pallets, for the decking on three sides around the ice rink. They simply need to be transported over. I've talked to the Public Works Director, and it's okay to use what they've got there, but we need to simply get them from one place to the other. So that is all. Supposedly, that's okay. I just need to communicate that to Public Works Director and get that. It's getting close to the time. We still need more consecutive days of freezing, even though it seems like it's plenty cold out there in order to get the solid base that we need. But we just want to move forward with that. If we need a...I'm not sure if we need a vote on that, is that...or just your okay or lack of?
Have you talked to Rob about that?
Yeah, absolutely. And that's...so that is all arranged. I just wanted to respond to your request that you said to bring that before the council, before actually requesting that. That part of it is all set up, so it's okay with you. We'll go ahead and get that done. The next step is going to involve just some volunteer work, getting the liner in and filling. That's really all that we need. And it's kind of a late start this year, but we're after it, and we're going to get as much time out of this as we can. Hopefully, with a late start, we'll be able to continue late into February, maybe March, I don't know. We'll see, weather permitting. So that having been said, I've put on my Neighborhood Watch hat and just need authorization for a release of funds from the 2017 budget, which is in the Police Department budget specifically designated for Neighborhood Watch. And what we want to do is get six new signs. We're actually going to get some more later on next year from our own Neighborhood Watch budget, but we wanted to get these ordered at least for next season. There's six of them, and I think you have a breakdown of the cost. It was $705, I think. These things are kind of expensive, including the posts and the breakaway, they call it. Because that's the way the signs are mounted, stop signs and all the city signs up in Monavista. So what we need is just the authorization for release of those funds, which doesn't come to...it's short of the amount that we need, but we'll make up the difference from the Neighborhood Watch general fund that we have. So we'll have those signs ready to go. And I believe the numbers work out to a total of about 12 more that we worked out with Public Works to finish off. That's our ideal, to finish off the city with the proper notification. We've got some other ideas, too, but at least getting this part done is important. We just need the authorization to use the funds that are available in the Police Department Neighborhood Watch designated amount for that order to be put in.
So what...you said the amount wouldn't cover the entire $705.87. Do you know the exact number that you're asking for?
Actually, no. The amount that's in...I did get the exact number, and I didn't make note of it at the time. I'd have to check with Chief on that.
It's just under $550. $543, I think, or $547.
Okay. And then the difference be made up with donations and funds that we've accumulated.
Awesome.
Do we need a formal motion to release the funds?
Actually, no, Madam Mayor, it is a budgetary expense, but we did ask that Mr. Johnson just bring this from the council, because when we did the project earlier with Public Works, Neighborhood Watch, and moved the signs around, that was one of the topics of discussion, was getting more. So just want, you know, want to be able to make you aware of and the public where that is moving forward.
So that's okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure. I understand that we're not having a meeting later on, so it would be it. I want to express my gratitude and thanks for your help and cooperation, but well, just with the ice rink and, of course, with Neighborhood Watch, but just in general. I hate to admit it, but I didn't have an awful lot of governmental experience coming into this town, and it's been a rewarding experience working with you, and I appreciate your help and support through everything that's been going on. And I congratulate you all for taking the stand on finding out what that takes to represent the city. So congratulations and thank you for your service.
Next item on the agenda is our Parade of Light Awards, and I've asked Azrael to help me this evening with this. Okay, so we wanted to be a little more expeditious in our awarding of...
Awards?
Awards this year. So we will start out with our Parade of Light entries. They could not be here this evening, so we've arranged another time, but our third-place Parade of Light went to?
Monavista. Wait. Oh, Girl Scouts, I'm following. I remember the wrong line, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we'll get them there as we study here. Second place?
Second place for a business is SLB Auto Repair. Are you sure with us?
I think they were still working when I left. All right, we'll make sure we get those up to them tomorrow. Our second-place school group?
The Monavista High School Student Council.
Do we have some student council that's here?
We got a picture.
We got a picture. Do you actually show it? There's a big picture.
Thank you guys for participating in this. And second place, social club, MB Rotary Club. Forrest? Forrest is part of our group as well.
Mr. Ferrish.
Can sit over here with me, Gene?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for participating. All right, and down to the first place. Monavista School Facilities.
Thank you so much for a beautiful flower.
Our third-place window decorating contest winner?
SLB Curiosity. Thank you.
Second place, window decorating contest goes to?
Southern Colorado Competing Services.
Thank you for participating. And our first-place window decorating contest winner is?
Salone Raha.
If you don't have Facebook, you should check out his photos online at night. It's very cool. Congratulations.
Thank you.
These are my last ones. Okay, I have a couple more mixed bags. Did I say a couple? Okay, these are for all of our sponsors. We just really could not make this event happen without the sponsorships. For those of you who did come out to the Parade of Lights, that event, what was our expenses, close to almost $4,000? So without these generous sponsors and donors and people behind the scenes making this event happen, we just could not do it. So we really want to recognize tonight our sponsors. SLBRAC and Cielo.
I'll call you.
I don't think Andrea came tonight. Colorado Potato Administration. I think Diana was going to come to accept the award for them, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Another one?
Yes, you have to watch some flash.
I'm just going to stand over here. I don't know what to do.
We appreciate it. Monavista Machine and Tool. Let's see Sarah here. Yeah. Valley Publishing, Anthony or Chelsea? Or both? Oh, picture, picture. So one of our big partners has been the Monavista Chamber of Commerce. They always do the crafters bizarre, and they get that lined up and they get that organized. So we'd like to recognize the Chamber of Commerce as a partner with us on this event, and I'd especially like to recognize Jerry Afker, our new chamber manager, as a bridge builder.
I just wait. Come on, Jerry.
You did do a lot.
Okay, I'll stick with this one.
I appreciate your help.
Thank you, Jerry.
Next sponsor was Pepper Equipment. Let's see, right in. Dr. Brian Roberts, DDS. Valley Tractor Repair. Jack's Market Pharmacy, I don't see Brian. Rio Grande Savings and Loan. Valley Three Theater. Do we have any of our theater board members? I won't make you come up again, Chelsea, so I'll recognize...so Chelsea's also on our committee, and you are truly, truly making a difference.
Thank you. I'll get them right here.
So just a little bit about the theater. This year, we hosted a free movie at the theater. Our Holiday Festival committee split the cost with the theater board on the rental, and we actually ended up having to turn eight...
Seventeen?
Seventeen people away. We had sold out. Well, it was free, but we were packed. Also, I want to recognize...I'm missing one. Okay, Monavista Schools this year, we had to do some changes, so the Monavista Schools were very generous and very helpful in allowing us to host the fireworks and stuff at the schools, so we would like to recognize them. I'm missing my fire department one. I had a little blowout, I think, but I have...so I want the Monavista Fire Department to come up, because again, we could not do this without them, and they're on standby, and you are our shining star, and I want to cheer you. Pat, thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'll get to your musk in my trunk.
I will say this was probably the most successful from a fireworks standpoint.
Right.
Probably the safest, best location, so our thanks to the school for allowing the location for that. I think it's a much better location, it's a lot safer, and I thought it was a really, really good production this year.
We did. We heard a lot of really good feedback, and we've gotten some suggestions already on ways we could, you know, create a more of a longer atmosphere in the parking lot. I thought it was very cool of all of your floats to stay parked and lit. That just kind of added to the festivities, and we did, we heard great comments. And since I do have all of you guys here, I'd like to also thank you for the veterans' parade and the flag that you do every year also. That really, really means a lot, and I think that's something that this community looks forward to, seeing those flags. So thank you for everything you do. I know you guys are volunteering your time, so thank you.
Thank you.
Again, you're our shining stars, and we can't thank you enough. Okay, and of course, we can't do it without the City of Monavista and all of our Public Works departments. They cut the wood, they get the fire pits going, they block the roads. So without the Public Works, the fireworks department, Forrest getting us squared away with insurance so we don't burn the town down, and so I'd like to thank the city. So Azrael, do you want to come up and take this?
Sure.
And I'd like to also recognize Azrael, because she's one of our committee members, as one of my biggest helping hands.
Aw, thank you.
Anytime I was like, "Azrael, can you come help me?", she was there, so.
Thank you, Debbie.
Okay, so I just real quick, I'm almost done. My last committee members, Anika.
I thought you were not here.
Anika's been on the committee with me for the last five, six years. She's always giving up her time to do the North Pole with Santa and Santa's workshop and keeping the kids busy all day on Saturdays, so you're very helpful. We've got Carol. Carol has been with me since the very beginning of this, which I think has been almost 10 years, and you are an essential piece.
Thank you.
Oh, Rob Vance is not with us this evening, but I'd like to recognize him. Jaime from Parks and Rec is not here, but he's been a great asset to our committee as well. And we had two new members this year, Shelby Honeycutt and Cindy Morgan. They're working with the PDE on the Christmas with the COP program, and they've been extremely helpful as well. So are you going to see them? I can run it out to them.
I'll see...I'll for sure see Cindy.
Okay, because the last person I'd like to recognize as my second shining star is Chief Rosecann. You can represent them.
Thanks, appreciate it.
So just real quick, let me take your horn for just a second, because so we did have some big changes this year, and we had to kind of revamp the whole parade and do fireworks at the high school, and without Chief Rosecann saying, "We can just take that parade down the highway if I'm like..." Oh, my God, thank you! So he made that whole... So he made that whole transition and change just wonderful. So you guys can't thank you enough for how easy you made that change, so.
I love it all. Seven of us out there, plus two public works.
I appreciate it, thank you. All right. And please tell your officers thank you too, because I know they were out there helping with the roadblocks and stuff too, so.
They had a lot of fun, the wives did a great job with the Mamba and putting the lights on and everything, they were tired.
Yeah, it was nice, it was nice to see the presence of the parade from first responders, ambulance, the fire and the police, it was great, so thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay. Now is the time in our meeting for any citizens' comments. If there's anyone that would like to come up, we ask you please come up and state your name and.
Hi, I'm Tim Armstrong here representing the Crane Festival Committee. And I understand that you guys signed an MOU but have a new one with a little, some changes and I just want to come and just see if anyone had any questions. We really appreciate the partnership between the Chamber and the Crane Festival Committee and the city and so far, I think this is our, going on our fourth year now and it's been working really well. I, I think that that was a thing we agreed when Greg Thompson said he'd like to retire from that, doing that event, we said, we'll do it as long as we have some partners and it's been great working with you guys and with Forrest and, and with the Chamber. And Jerry, as you said, has been a tremendous asset to the Chamber, really getting a lot done, so. Any, any questions at all about any of that? Okay, all right. One more thing I would like to request is a donation from the city for the Crane Festival Committee in the amount of $200 out of your discretionary fund for '17 and this would go toward the 2018 Spring Festival, Crane Festival.
So from what I understand, we can't do an official motion on that. However, I will be bringing it up in my council report and we'll do an official.
Okay. Any, any other questions at all? And for those of you who are going off the city council, I want to thank you for your service.
Is there anyone else this evening? Okay, we will move on to our licenses and liquor renewals. We have a request to transfer liquor license from the Montevilla Inn to Three Guys Farms.
Madam Mayor, so normally a liquor license transfer would not come, would not come in front of the board, but with the history, Alex is here with Three Guys Farms and he has presented this to you. So it is an administrative action that is taken to do a liquor license transfer. Alex and Three Guys Farms has met all the requirements for the transfer, they have been fingerprinted, everything has been sent off, so I will sign off and approve that tomorrow.
If anybody here or in the audience has questions for myself or for the business, for actually incorporating a new business for the purposes of this venture, it's going to be Three Guys Pubs, Three Guys Farms, Three Guys Freight, Three Guys Pubs, you know, so, uh, so there's a new venture being started here and we really appreciate your support. Any questions from anybody here? We're pretty transparent guys and I can probably speak and answer any questions, but if I can't, I've got Igor on speed dial, he's at the pub, so.
I don't have any questions, I, I would just like to say, um, my family enjoys going there, we really enjoy the atmosphere and the food is amazing and so I wish you nothing but the best.
We appreciate that. We really appreciate everybody's support here and if you've visited or haven't visited, please do come by.
I would echo the same thing that the mayor said, you know, I think the model that you guys have and, you know, really a ag-based business to bring it in, a farm-to-table business here in, in Montevista and then expanding and giving back to the community is exactly what we'd like to see with all of our businesses and doing it so early since you guys have started has just been amazing and I'm, I'm very thankful for what you've been able to contribute to this community and between the fundraiser for the Kids Connection and all that you do, we're very appreciative of it.
We're happy to do it. What I've handed out to, I think the chief has one and then every single city council member, I know Jason, Councilman Lorenz, excuse me, you had asked for basically what we would do coming into this business and how we would differ in terms of how we would run the hotel. And one of the things I said that we would do is we would have a safety plan and at least some idea of how to deal with emergency situations or anything that may arise at the pub. What you have in front of you is a very rough draft that is going to be edited probably many more times over. It's the very beginning of that draft, or rather of that document and I really actually would appreciate feedback from Chief Rosecrans or anybody in the police force because we, you know, we want that pub to sort of become a, I don't want to call it a, what do I want to call it? Basically a really family-friendly place to go for anybody in Montevista or outside of Montevista and to do that, we've got to make sure that we do the right thing by the community and by ourselves and so that's why we've put together this plan. I know you had asked what we would do, so I think that that addresses your concerns. And we'll only continue to do more of that, so. Cool, well, if there are no other questions, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to resolutions, we have Resolution 14-2017, setting our annual mill levy for the city of Montevista, which is a council.
I move to approve Resolution Number 14-2017, a resolution establishing the annual mill levy for the city of Montevista, Colorado for the year beginning January 1, 2018 and ending December 31, 2018.
Second. Any other discussion? Nita?
Councilor Lorenz? Councilor Schlebach?
Aye.
Councilor Schrader?
Aye.
Councilor Martinez?
Aye.
Mayor Garcia?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Thank you. Moving on to ordinances, we have Ordinance 883, which is an update of our fee schedule for the municipal court in the city of Montevista, which is a council.
I move to approve Ordinance Number 883, an ordinance adopting a fee schedule for the municipal court of the city of Montevista.
Second. Any other discussion? Nita?
Councilor Martinez?
Aye.
Councilor Lorenz?
Aye.
Councilor Schrader?
Aye.
Councilor Schlebach?
Aye.
Mayor Garcia?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Contracts, agreements and leases, we have a request from Waste Management for a price increase. Which is a council.
Anyone from here present?
Yes, sir, Anthony Howard from Waste Management is here this evening.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening. I wanted to show up and just first and foremost say thank you for the continued opportunity to do business here in the city. We're requesting this price increase based on the contract CPI last 12 months, which is attached to the letter, is 2.8%. And so it would be a 2.8% increase over the rates from last year. And if you have any questions, here to answer.
So for those of you in the audience that don't have the handout, it's, if you're a residential customer, you're currently paying 1634, that would take your new rate up to 1681. If you're a two-container household, 2271 to 2336. Any questions?
What's driving the cost increase?
That's, uh, the price increase is based on the CPI of the US Department of Labor Statistics for basically all services, all service-based businesses over the past 12 months. So it's an average of that. It typically comes out every six months, we take the last six months of the prior year and then, I'm sorry, yes, the last six months of the prior year and the first six months of this year and then we average that out and it came to 2.85.
Is there any plans in Waste Management's future for offering any recycling programs?
We're definitely working on that all over Colorado. Of course, the issue continues to be, I'm sure we can collect recycling, but once you have to transport it to a MRF, Materials Recovery Facility, it becomes very pricey. And so we're, we're definitely trying to work on that and that's one of the reasons why I'm down here to go over to the site tomorrow, just to see where we are with that, if we could possibly, you know, bring recycling, even if it's just a drop-off site. You know, that might help. We've been able to do that in communities similar to this city and so we're definitely working on it.
What would it take from like the citizens to, to help bring that about?
One thing that comes up is, you know, most municipalities like to do recycling, it's the right thing to do. One thing that we're running into is this is a commodity that's basically sold and the largest purchaser of that commodity is China. And unfortunately, China has put together a lot of restrictions in terms of what can actually be accepted at the ports in China. And what we're asking is when we do offer recycling in a community, whether it's curbside or like I said, a drop-off, that it has to be clean, we have to be able to sell that product to the end user without them, you know, we basically put it on a boat and ship it there and then they look at it, do an inspection and say, nope, take it back, or they just throw it away. So we've been encouraging customers to clean the stream, if you will, you know, if you're unsure, you know, don't put it in the recycling. And, and we, as a company, we also, we offer a lot of education when it comes to that, on what can go into a recycling stream. And so I would just say, you know, right now there's not a program, but if there were a program to come about, just try to be as clean as possible.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I guess just my only concern is I know that when we first did this contract a few years ago, that that was something that we had talked about was recycling and, you know, and I, and I understand it's, you know, not a simple fix, but you know, I know that that's something we've been discussing for quite some time to be able to get that, those services in the city limits, you know, and I mean, I would hope that we could get that, you know, as soon as we can, just because I know that was on the original contract that we had signed.
Sure. And something else we also try to do is, it's all about density and efficiencies when you're dealing with trash and recycling, so if we can get other communities too, outside of the city, to also do a similar type of program, it's kind of like economies of scale, you know, that cost comes down. So we've been, you know, talking to other cities and municipalities as well.
Thank you for coming, appreciate that. Which is a council?
I move to approve the rate increase for Waste Management by 2.85% effective January 1, 2018.
Motion? What happens, we have?
Madam Mayor, the motion would die without a second.
Just to, just as a little side note here, I've, based upon the education that I have in business economics, I've looked at the Consumer Price Index and it seems to be one of the, the things that drives what we buy, how we buy it and how everything is priced. And so essentially, what I'm saying is, when the Consumer Price Index goes up, everybody's costs go up. So I understand the reluctance to add an additional cost here and I'm a bit reluctant myself and yet, when looking at the Consumer Price Index, it's about as fair a value as you can attach to anything that you want to attach to it. So it's just my point, my take on that.
No seconds. The motion dies? We'll move on to, so we need to add in the MOU with the Crane Fest. So at our last meeting, we had the MOU with the Crane Festival Committee, the Chamber and the city, there was one minor change, um, saying that the Chamber will contribute $750 towards the cost to bring in the Hawks A Loft and so that's the only addition and change to the MOU, so. Which is a council to sign the updated MOU agreement.
I'm going to sign the updated MOU with the Crane Festival.
Second. Any other discussion? Nita?
Councilor Lorenz?
Aye.
Councilor Schlebach?
Aye.
Councilor Schrader?
Aye.
Councilor Martinez?
Aye.
Mayor Garcia?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Thank you. Okay, City Managers Report.
Madam Mayor, I have nothing to add, my report pretty much action on this for tonight. Let's see, I don't have any questions.
Any questions for Forrest? Uh, moving on to Kids Connection Report.
Good evening. I was proud of myself, actually had a report in your file there this week, I was on it, even though it didn't come till like 6:00 PM on Monday night, sorry Nita. So, and I noticed after I had sent it, I went back and looked and I left my membership numbers blank, because I had membership numbers and I was like, I'll come back to it because I had to look it up and completely forgotten it got sent to you. Um, so as of year-to-date enrollment is 205 members since June of 2017. Um, our after-school program, in the month of November, we had an average of 65 students a day. Our high number was at 69. And there were like three days in November that we were way up there, so we've had lots of fun every day after school. With the weather taking a quick turn and getting really cold, where Mr. Futrell has allowed us to meet in the, um, in the cafeteria like we have done in previous winters, get all the kids together and then walk over as a group rather than waiting out in the cold to get everyone out there, so. November was a big, was a cute success for us, we hosted our third annual, technically would've been fourth, but our third year was skipped because of our move. So we hosted our Thanksgiving feast, we had approximately 30 people attend to eat with our kids, which was a pretty good number. We were, we had like 13 kids that day when we opened and as the day was progressing towards noon, I was like, we have all this food and nobody is going to eat it. I looked at staff, I was like, you guys spent all night cooking and all morning cooking and you get to take it all home? But we started having some parents show up, so that was pretty nice. We served close to 40 pounds of turkey, 20 pounds of mashed potatoes, four pounds of macaroni and cheese, we also had green bean casserole, corn casserole and a regular salad and we served eight pies. And all of it went, we had more mashed potatoes than we needed because the staff was like, I'll cook 10 pounds, before you knew it, we had like 50 pounds of cooked mashed potatoes. So they had lots of mashed potatoes all week. So that was, that was awesome for us. December, we kicked off the Holiday Festival on December 1st with the Community Appreciation Breakfast. The breakfast, from what I was told, went really well, it was very well received, they had, Jesse said close to 100 people came out to eat and we're kind of in and out throughout the three hours in the morning. We received $300 in donations, so that was really awesome. And then we did, had the And then we did, had the ribbon-cutting ceremony and the unveiling of the sign, which I heard didn't go as smoothly as they had hoped.
It added to the suspense.
Dusty was like, the sheets may or may not have been torn before we put them up there, and that's all he told me. I was like, well, thank you for taking that on, apologize for not being there, but there were other things going on. So I was happy to, to be there. That was the one thing, honestly, the last year, I was really looking forward to, and I missed it, and at 8 o'clock, I was checking Facebook, like, somebody please post a picture. It wasn't until like 11:00 that Valley Publishing got something on the, on the site, and I finally was like relieved for the day. But thank you for those of you that were able to attend. Thank you to the community that has come out to support us and really support us in the last year. We truly appreciate everything anyone has been able to give us or do for us. Saturday, we hosted Santa's Workshop. We had between 75 and 100 kids and parents come out and do crafts. All of my craft supplies disappeared. The only thing I was left over with was coloring pages. So that was really well received. By about 2:00, though, we were completely dead, so I snuck over to the theater and I realized that's where everybody was. So Santa's Workshop went really amazing. We then set up for Cookies with Santa for after the parade, and that was a huge success. I think we were all very nervous, we weren't going to have anyone show up because of all the changes for the weekend, and the second the parade was over, people didn't stop coming. I started handing out tickets to groups. I handed out 50 groups an individual ticket. So I'm guessing we had close to 250 people in the building that night. Bob was, or Santa, sorry, I spilled the beans. No little ones in here, so I think I'm safe. He was very excited to see as many people, and we kept him busy till after 9:00, so that was really awesome. The face painter that we had did an amazing job. She even stayed a few minutes late and painted the last three adults. Where did she sneak out to? As a row. It was like, you have to get your face painted, so we got our face painted. Mr. Jim was the Grinch, and those, I tagged those on the community page, so everyone can see the Penguin and the, and Grinch. So that was the beginning of December. We'll close out December with the holiday break for the school. We will be, we will open early on the 21st at 1:00 PM, because there's an early release for the school, so Mr. Futrell gave me a good notice, and we will go over and pick up kids early. We will be closed the 22nd, December 27th, oh wait, no, we're closed the 22nd, Christmas Day, and then the day after, and then we'll open it up again the 27th, 28th, 29th, and then the same thing the following week after New Year's. We'll be closed New Year's Day and the day after, and then open the 3rd, 4th, and 5th. And those are, hours are 7:30 to 5:30, so we'll try to keep the kids as busy as we can. We hope to do a matinee at the theater, because they're showing Ferdinand that week, so I'm super excited about going and watching that one. And then just, we'll do our annual gingerbread, we've done gingerbread houses in the past. This year, I think I'm just going to do a gingerbread person and a gingerbread tree, because I saw this really cool thing out of Waffle Cones. That way, each kid can get their own, they don't have to share the gingerbread house, because that's always a lot of fun, trying to figure out how those groups will work together.
And split the house?
Yeah. Well, and then at the end, when they're like, I want to take it home, it's just no fun. We're like, we can pull it in pieces, but I think I figured out a way to get them all their own little pieces and they can decorate it themselves. And we'll just kind of enjoy some, hopefully lazy smoothies. I don't know, I think it's just going to be cold, we're not going to have any snow forever, but that's how December should play out for us. I'm hoping for snow, it would make sense for the cold. Right?
Yeah.
So other than that, that's been Kids Connection, it's been a fun month. And that's where we are. I really want to thank Council for all their support throughout these years, and we'll miss seeing these faces up here. It's going to be very weird the next time I step up and there's new faces, so I want to thank you guys for all your support and everything that you've given to the club and come to help out with, and hopefully we can keep that going, and you'll still want to keep us going. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Any questions? No, I just want to thank you for, again, for all your hard work this last weekend with the, every time I went in there, you were wall-to-wall people, and it was good, but I know that was exhausting, and you and your staff worked hard. Anika's quite the jack-of-all-trades, so I had to borrow a truck, I had to go pick up some fire pits, and I couldn't get them in my Subaru, so I had to borrow a truck and I didn't, it's, I'm used to turning off the key and everything going off, and the lights didn't go off, and I took the key out. So Anika jumped my truck for me. So he's like, I know, thank you so much.
You're welcome. My dad had three girls, and so we all know how to make sure a vehicle stays running, so never rely on anyone. Our call husband helped out.
I got you covered.
Yeah, I appreciate it, thank you. You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you. Recreation Report, I think I may sound, is, does anybody have any questions from his written tour? Okay. IT also has a report in the package, did you want to say anything?
Just wanted to make a note that we did satisfy all the requests that the interim judge made. We have mute switches on each of the microphones. We fixed the video conferencing software, so you can contact the Alamosa County Jail, not to transport anymore. And, oh, now I forgot the last one. Oh, shoot.
Do you want us to remind you?
Sure.
It's in our email, it's not in this one. No, he's fast.
Of course, this is what happens.
This is IT.
The switch. Oh, it's on this. Well, we satisfied all the requests, we were just saying. Yes.
You're investigating the panic alarm system.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
It's a town.
And there was one other thing, but, oh, well, it's in the report, I know that for sure. All right, any questions besides the obvious? What's the third?
Thank you. Appreciate it. Jason?
I'd just like to thank the Lord and the citizens of Montevista for the opportunity to serve on council, and I wish you all well.
Thank you for your service.
I attended the pancake breakfast at the Kids Connection. It's quite the turnout. I'm a big pancake fan, so it was breakfast served with all the accoutrements, strawberries, sprinkles.
Whipped cream.
Whipped cream, the whole works. And then, of course, the unveiling of the new sign for the Kids Connection, giving credit where credit was due to Bob Briny, that's now the Kids Connection at the Briny House. And I think most of us know what a large part Bob Briny played in the finalization of getting the kids a new home. So that was really spectacular, except for the sheets not coming back.
It added to the suspense.
Added a little suspense there. North Pole with Santa was Saturday night, and like Anika said, we were all a little apprehensive about what kind of turnout we would have. Fortunately, people know where to find Santa. So, and we got, had plenty of cookie donations, and were able to serve all the people that showed up with hot cider and cookies, and meeting with Santa, and I, for those of you who don't know Santa, most of you here in the audience are too old to go sit on Santa's lap, but Santa is the best. And hopefully, we will see him again next year, but we don't know. And then coming up on Saturday, the 16th, is wreaths across America at the Veterans Center Cemetery at 10:00, so hopefully, you will all come out and see all the wreaths that have been purchased and placed on the headstones of the veterans that are buried out there.
Thank you.
Also attended the pancake breakfast and the unveiling, and I wanted to thank everyone in the community that came out to support that. I think it's a great endeavor and to finally do the ribbon cutting for a brand-new building and getting our kids, or the Kids Connection their permanent home and, you know, helping out our families here. The Holiday Festival, I felt, was really well-attended this year, seeing everybody packed, and then what I really, like what the mayor had said before, was not only just the floats and everybody, you know, kind of funneling there into the high school, but the fact that it turned out to like a tailgate kind of thing, that everybody wanted to stay out there, the music was playing, and I think that that just picked up with the vibe, and I really like how we've been able to expand that over the years, and, you know, and I think having that one centralized meeting spot was really beneficial for, for not only the committee, but then for the citizens as well, too. And then the high school was selling their chili and pozole and...
Smores and hot cocoa.
Yeah. So, and I think, you know, finding little events like that, that we can, or places like that, that we can, you know, contribute and bring the community together is, is I was struggling to figure out what I wanted to say, since it's my last meeting, but, you know, it's been an honor and a privilege to serve this great city, and for someone that grew up here that, you know, never had a lot of money, or, you know, really didn't really know what I wanted to do after I got out of the service, you know, being able to contribute and give back and help influence positive change in this community is something that I'm very proud of, and I want to thank all the citizens, and I want to just wish everyone the best of luck.
So I thought the Parade of Lights was absolutely outstanding this year. I was very impressed, and I think just it keeps on getting better every single year. And the city workers and everybody came out, came together and really made it happen. I was about as surprised as you were that we went down the highway, but it made it really nice, because it went right past my place, so I could see it from the porch. And, you know, it was just, the community's come together once again, done some great things, and I, I just, I love the way that we continuously, I think pretty much every single time that we have a meeting, I'm amazed again by what the community's done, how the community's come together, and I just really, truly do appreciate it. It's been an honor serving with this council. Matt, I've seen your example of leadership, the professionalism that you've held, the line that you've held, has been very impressive to me. Debbie, I very much appreciated your leadership and how you've, how you've led this council, and I really appreciate and respect it, and it's definitely been a true honor. So that's what I've got.
Thank you. I'm not going to say anything, because I get a little emotional, so I will miss all of you, but it's been an honor and a privilege, and I'll still be around, I'll help wherever I can. My intentions have always been to help the community, and I'm a little disappointed that our community is so divided at the moment, and I, I hope we can come together and get over some of this negativity that's going on. The five of us up here are not bad people, and we are not self-centered, we're not on the take, we're not ignoring crime because we're, we've got it cut, and it breaks my heart. It breaks my heart that we all want what's best, and we're all in this together, and if everyone could just realize that we are all in this together, and backstabbing, backtalking, degrading people, cutting people down is not the solution, and it's not bringing this community together. It's only dividing and further and further apart. So with that, I will be in the background, and I will continue to support, and I will continue to be positive and do my best to see this community be successful. I think, Carol would like to say one more thing before we leave, and we'll adjourn.
I would like to thank Debbie for her leadership, the other members of council for all coming together to do, to try to do what is best for this community. It's been a struggle sometimes, but hopefully, people will come to know that we had the very best interest of this community at heart. But having said that, I would like to say, six years ago, the residents of Montevista elected me to represent them. It's been a learning experience filled with ups and downs, but I have enjoyed every minute that I have served. But now, it's time to step aside and let the new members have that same experience. I will fulfill my duties that still remain for this month, but will resign effective December 31st. Thank you.
Sorry, I can't see. Thank you. Okay, so if there's nothing else, we will be adjourned until Thursday, January 4th at 6:00 PM.